Three reports about your fire pit.
My fire pit? Well, my boys had to have their own fire pits on their school.
So do I need my mask if I do that, things like that?
Alright, I'm gonna call this Board of Selectment's meeting to order for September 29th. Rule call, we have Phil Crossman, Donald Poole, myself, Pam Alley, Jake Thompson, Andy Doer, Town Manager, and Elizabeth Bunker. Fifty town perk is sixty minutes. Approve agenda, we have three additions. Under seven, we have CDC Committee Appointments.
CDC.
Under Old Business Capital Projects Update, and under New Business Municipal Quit Claim Deed.
Can you slow down just a little?
They're all up on the board too.
Was the last one under New Business?
Yes. I move we approve the agenda as amended. Seconded by Pam Alley, all those in favor? Minutes, approve the minutes from the September 15th meeting.
Come on.
Our second motion, all those in favor?
I, I have one, um, one typo on the new business number nine. Under A, there was a consensus of the board to shop around for other baking options. Which would be nice, we have somebody actually in our school, but I think it's supposed to be banked.
Hit it, will you get them in admission?
Item number four, approve and sign Treasures Mournant number thirteen, so moved. All those in favor? And if anyone, two other signatures please, before we leave. So Communications, Fourth of July Committee, ban stay improvements.
I, I felt really bad about, I thought we were not, that there's been some negativity towards the project from the town. I don't know if it means us in particular, or the board. But I don't think we've ever.
I wrote it and told her that we hadn't expressed any just approval.
No, not at all, I don't, I wish, I feel badly, I don't.
I think all that was based on was one conversation I had with Bill, he interpreted it one way. I followed up with Tori once we got there. So I expressed to them, it was, there's been no communication this way. Acknowledging, you know, what, what work would like to be done, or needing to be done. So I think, that's fine, she laid out the phases of, you know, what they're hoping to see done, they've been trying to solicit quotes from various people to be able to do some of the repair work. Before, and I did say that, well, there is a Historic Sites Reserve Fund that could be utilized. It asked above the board. Now, they were trying to do as much as they could through, you know, volunteer work and donations, which I think is highly likely. But.
So then, then I'm looking for anything approval or anything else, it's just keeping up close to good enough. Why move we endorse their efforts anyway?
Oh yeah.
I second that motion. In discussion?
Well, I'd like to see the fact that they have the large, the flagpole on there, because that's a desperate need. How, I think we should talk about that at some point, because it looks pretty shaky. If you look, I mean, I'm not gone right up to it, but it looks like it.
Everything out here looks pretty shaky.
That's all right, dude. Yeah, I think that we ought to discuss that.
All those in favor? Hey FEMA.
Hello, I'm Mark. This is one that had been applied for by a property owner. FEMA's sent back the proposal, or what they're gonna revise. So most of the changes came in Stan's Cove, and if they looked at it. Just sharing that communication with you.
So, just so I'm clear. What is this zone?
I'm sorry, what?
This is the favorable.
For that particular property, I mean, yes. And it might, it might benefit some of the other ones around him, you can see that there was affected flooding zone, you know, VE, and there's some that are going from V to A, some from V to X.
And what is X? What does that mean?
Honestly, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
You said what VE and AE mean.
Yeah, V is with lot, you know, wave action with velocity. And AE is just more or less the, I'm just, inundation or less of a wave action.
So why is the Carver Harbor?
What's that?
You said we were talking about Stan's Cove?
Correct.
That's why, so why is it will have a pond? Oh, I see. I see, okay, yeah.
So this is what the property owner was hoping for, or not?
I assume so.
Was he hoping for even better?
Not sure. But it just kind of shows you the process and, you know, what to give back. I haven't followed back up with our efforts yet still, Nathan replied sometime this summer. But haven't picked that up with him yet to look at the rest of ours. There was another map included in the packet that showed parts of Carver Harbor in there, so that might give us an inclination of what might be likely around that property that was surveyed and, and asked for revisions. And you can share that with, or Nathan knows what it is, because he was part of, he was hired to do that work, Ransom was hired to do that work for that property owner as well, so. Given that these have come back and FEMA's saying, this is what they're gonna change, I think it's worth talking with them again to see. What do we know, what is it more likely to do, and maybe we don't have as much of a broad stroke on it, maybe we look more just at a concentrated area. Like on the north side of the pond, or main street. If it doesn't, if it wasn't already included in that map change. Correct.
So eleven is eleven feet, eighteen is eighteen feet, so that means?
Yep.
Questions? We'll go on to speakers on the floor. Anyone out there have any concerns, questions, comments? Okay, Committee and Department Reports and Appointments, Harbor Master Summary.
It was quite a summary.
Yeah, it's, I think, quite informative.
So how should he respond in a meaningful way to a Coast Guard request for assistance if he has no radar on the limited transportation that we provided?
Standby, I guess, I mean, I certainly don't think that we'd wanna be sending someone out there with, that's ill-equipped.
Right.
You know, our, our small boat doesn't have the instruments it needs on there, or is it really the type of boat you wanna send out in thick of fog? If someone's already lost in it, so. I did mention that, I said, you know, shouldn't, shouldn't go out new, if you don't have the equipment to do it, you know.
Says he used his own boat.
Right, I mean Coast Guard calls, calls, you know, someone in the area, if they're there first to be able to assist, but you're not, I mean, we're not, we're not equipped to assist, and I wouldn't recommend we put someone out there at risk, and he did use his boat, and other times, other people volunteered to use their boats if they hear the call, or, or go out as well, but as a official capacity as Harbor Master, you know, we know we don't have the boat and the equipment to send them out.
Does, does he as Harbor Master have any kind of obligation that we don't, that I don't understand or know about with the Coast Guard?
Not that I know of.
That was another one. What's a, what's the harbor fishing in the bay, what's that all about?
Trying to keep it at bay, trying to keep people from setting traps in the harbor, and he said wow, because he can't do it all.
The traps, I thought the chuckles. Why is that so appealing? Set traps in the harbor all of a sudden, or is that not?
It's always been appealing.
People have always done it, it's just this is the first year we've worked there, right?
Second.
Well, because of the moorings, people, you know, traps, keep trying to go on the mooring, or come to mooring, or leave the mooring, and the pop boys are right by their boats and stuff.
Yeah, I understand why it's a problem, I just didn't know that it was that.
It shouldn't have been a problem, there's plenty of open out there.
Right.
Yeah.
But yeah, people, yeah, people fish the harbor for a while, they're just being.
We should just buy them a red handled knife.
All right, Jake.
A rope wrench.
Island's needed at the parking lot, he's talking about the town parking lot downtown?
Yes, they need caps on them?
Yeah, I mean, there's some of the ones at the,
Yeah, I thought they did have caps.
Some of the paved, paved parking lots, some of them have broken off, and the other one, most of those need to be replaced altogether.
Yeah, we need to, yeah, they, that's important to keep.
Right.
You know, you know what's an easy temporary fix? That grease, water shield that has the sticky side. Just buy some of that and just cut some squares and put it over the top with a couple zip ties around it, hold it on. Kind of melts on with the sun, that's what I did at my watering, it's held on for quite a long time, but obviously, it's not as much use in my personal work, but, I mean, it's a cheap, quick fix, I mean, you go up and buy all of that ice and water shield and peel the sun, cut a little square, peel the side off, push it over the top, put a couple white ties on it, and I mean, it's better than nothing, maybe for the plastic things to come.
Yeah, well, yeah, we should, we should definitely order.
That's what I need to do to my money.
Yeah, that's another good idea for a temporary fix, especially if it might take a while to get. Yeah, I don't know what the turnaround is on delivery for those.
So we'll get, we'll get some, right?
Sure.
Is there any update on the ferry moorage issue?
Uh, I've heard from one of the three people that we sent letters to, so far. Haven't heard anything more from the ferry service, but.
Person mentioning this, then contact again specifically. I don't see, exactly see what the problem is, I thought they put those rubber things on the end so the ferry could pivot off of them, I don't. And if it's such a big deal, couldn't they back out, turn, like, I mean, the North, the North Haven Ferry Boat backs out, backs hundreds of feet out into the channel before they turn around because of all the moorings on either side. I mean, our boat could back out towards, I mean, if they had to, if the weather was wrong. Seems like they always make allowances for North Haven, and then they don't for us, so.
Well, it seems to me if there's just one or two moorings, they should be able to find a place to move them out of the way, so this.
Well, that's our problem, in Carver Harbor, there's no lot, there's no ready place to.
There's not one available spot to move a mooring to?
With the records we have and what we've seen there, no. You can shift something maybe a few feet here and there, but I'm told by both Harbor Masters that we have that, our deputy and our Harbor Master, that there isn't another place in, to put a forty foot boat.
Oh.
And he's got, he's got two, he's got, you know, this one in particular's got two boats, but there's still two other people that the ferry service is saying is a problem as well.
Yeah, well, I know, I know that, I didn't realize this one, he didn't have a forty foot boat.
Whatever ends up sitting on it.
I'm sorry?
Whatever ends up sitting on, I mean, a range of, sometimes one's a rental mooring, and one's a mooring they use for their fishing boats, so I think the rental mooring is one that's had anything from a
Yeah, but that's.
Small sailboat to a, I think it was a, what, four, whatever the bigger one was a few weeks ago. I think that's what they were trying to say was part of the, I mean, that, that rental mooring was in most particular bad spot, depending on how big the boat's on there. That's what they were, but then they mentioned.
If it's a rental mooring, then can't they just use it in the summertime and move it in the winter or whatever, I mean, I would think that the problem with the ferry is gonna be when it's windy in the winter, right?
I don't want to know some more.
I mean, they want, the ferry service asked for them for the rear move. They don't care if they're taking out the hill, so they can go somewhere else, but they said they just couldn't present a problem for them where they are.
Is it a registered mooring?
I don't know.
It's supposed to be registered.
And we've got incomplete records since they'd start, tried to start the project in oh six, and.
Well, a lot of people did register their moorings, so the ones that aren't, are not in compliance, if it's in the power ordinance.
Quite a few.
Okay, but so, we'll address that problem, but as far as this particular, I mean.
Well, I'm saying if it's not a registered mooring, then you should be able to take it up.
Oh, who's gonna, who's gonna take it up? You guys. I, I don't disagree with you, but you're gonna have to perhaps, you have to find someone to take it up.
Well, maybe somebody on the Harbor Committee might consider doing that.
Maybe Main State Ferry Service should do it.
That, that's a good idea.
That one's complaining about it.
Let them deal with it.
Exactly.
But I think there's one bar joint in North Haven that's probably not going to take up a mooring without permission. Probably.
Well, I don't know why.
I don't, I don't know how much money you'd have to give them, but.
There's not much point in having ordinances and rules and regulations, you know, that follows them, and nobody dares to enforce them, so what? Why do we have them?
Good question.
So has, has anybody actually called, other than certified mail, correct?
That's why, so yeah, Jim's contract, tried to contact them before this summer, I sent the, the one letter so far. The next step will be to call them, I want some record that I actually sent something, I guess phone messages don't always.
Right.
So that would be the next step, is to.
Yeah.
So what is the, what is the plan for, I mean, Jimmy's mooring up to one of them, isn't it? He's the Harbor Master.
He's moved his already, and they said it's fine now.
Okay.
He was the first one to move. Pete's moved his already, but they're saying it's still a problem.
So those are two of the three that were the problem?
There was four, oh, four owners, five, six moorings in total. Because two with the, Ira has two, Jimmy Poole had one. Pete had one. There's five more, and Jim, and Jim Norton has one.
It seems, sounds the way he's written it, that's just one problem, one person is the problem. Is what it looks like to me.
Yeah, that's, that was my takeaway as well.
Well, when are we gonna get this hybrid plan?
They started a meeting with us last week, and they're planning to get, trying to get it done before the end of the calendar year.
Because I have a feeling that when you get this plane back, you'll be able to ship some moorings around, because the way they're laid out, there could be more room, so hopefully it'll be moved after, we can see, I mean, not all moorings are uniform, some people have way more swing than they need, and, I mean, if everything were to get updated and moved around for the plan for, you know, I think there would be more room for more moorings in the harbor, so hopefully we can solve this with that.
Right. But is that gonna, that's not gonna solve, I mean, they want this moved now, yeah, yesterday, yeah.
Well, I mean, it's at the point where if, if the wind blows from a certain direction, right, and the tide's not just right, you know, it could interfere, and that, that, you know, they've said that they'll cancel if they have to.
Well, once it's just one person, it would seem that that person should be able to move enough somewhere.
And also, you know, but that, you know, I've seen when my father has moved his mooring, and the fact that that is what they're still calling in the way, is.
Excessive, right?
Oh, I mean, if, if they've gone that far, they're probably just gonna go right through the whole harbor, you know, like.
Who makes that determination on behalf of the ferry service?
I would say captains, recommendation, cap, captains, concerned, yeah. Captains have stated to management how much room, you know, how much room they need.
For both families or just?
I don't know which captain has, I don't know which captain or captain.
Both, both captains, or captains on both boats have weighed in. Of course, one's operating a vessel that's not gonna be that length anymore, after, whenever the new one comes in the water, and it's more like the other.
Isn't that why they put valve thrusters and all this stuff on, so they can turn them easier, so they shouldn't? I mean, I don't see why it's an issue, but, can we go to something else?
Yeah, so.
Well, I think they should respond to the ferry service and tell them that we have this harbor study underway, and hopefully by the time we conclude that, we'll be able to move some moorings around, put it on the back burner that way.
Tell them to come dredge the harbor to make more room for us, and we won't have a problem.
I agree with you, so, I think that that's a, a good course to take.
And also, Andy, if you could also call up this owner. Make, yeah, make some attempts to get in contact with them in person. Sounds good.
One of them was a rental mooring, I offered to tell them the state will buy it from them.
Yeah, the state will, state will rent the mooring.
Yeah, the state will rent the mooring, and then we'll just cut it off.
Well, if they get rid of that Darryl's boat, they could put the mooring there.
Oh, good ideas tonight, Jake. Uh, Road Commissioner's report. Yeah, I don't think we have. No, we don't have hard copies.
I mean, they've been focused a lot on ditching and clearing some trees overhead, trees in, in the roadways for the most part the last couple weeks. We're down a couple trucks right now. One, I think is a, they think it's an injector problem, it's the older eighty-five hundred GMC. And then the five, or fifty-five hundred is also getting the same problems that the other diesels are getting. After, at least once a year, if not twice a year. The pickup truck, that one, and I think the Western Star's done it once now, they'll get into a link mode or an idle mode, and they have to computer system has to be cleared out and cleaned out, and it's part of the emission standards that are in the diesels, and it's is what it is, I guess, and it has to go over to be done.
You can't have them bypass it.
Uh, I must stay statute to change.
Not legally, yeah. What they don't know.
The pickup truck's a diesel too?
How did that come about?
One.
If we go to gas, we'll have to either work with the co-op or find our own solution to getting gasoline supply.
That's no big deal, but.
Or getting it here will be. They can't go on a ferry boat.
That's a what?
I'm pretty sure it has to be barged.
You can't just go out and get it out of the.
Yeah, just go, just go pump it at the.
Well, right, so either work with the co-op, or.
Oh, yeah, that, that won't be, that's something that won't be a problem. I mean. And for that matter, I mean, job's just to fill up the tank before the gas station closes.
It works, it.
Okay.
Hey.
CDC.
CDC Committee, CDC.
Yeah, I thought.
Not.
No, no.
I was thinking the other CDC, I don't see why, you don't have that committee.
Yet.
So, Gabe's been reaching out to some folks that, after they did the survey, reaching out to some folks that might wanna serve on the committee. The thought we've had is to form a committee of, for the most part, I think everyone on that list right now is year-round residents. And then to also build like an advisory or technical assistance advisory committee or group with that, just you know, when they get to a point where, what, what more information do we need, or, you know, what about this, whether it's a financial resource, or technical assistance, and how to create an organization, or the financial structure, or how to set something up. You know, trying to complement that committee with the technical capacity to be able to move ahead and give us recommendations. So, I don't know if Gabe wanted to offer more.
Is it a conflict? For Samantha, to be honest, did you call her?
I don't know.
I didn't know if there'll be any kind of conflict, that's all, I just wanted, she mentioned that you called, or Gabe called. She was asking what I thought, and I didn't have any opinion, so I'm just making sure it wasn't.
Yeah, I guess I would just add that, you know, just thinking about the, the sort of committee inventory work that we've been doing, and that Matt has taken up, and that we hope to bring to you at some point, and possibly the next meeting. Just, you know, sort of going about how we, how we go about just thinking about these projects that we take on and need community input for, and so, just working with our advisory team of the three individuals that we've Andy and I have been working with since last year around this idea. And then really reaching out to various stakeholders that we spoke with in our initial assessment, like Andy said, after doing our initial questionnaire and conversations with people, so the goal with this was to try to build a diverse group of individuals that could bring a variety of perspectives to this idea, so that was really diversity in perspective was really something we were focused on with this, with this group.
So you're gonna bring us members to point, or, next time, is that the plan? Or do we not, it says we have to appoint, right?
Right. Gabe, were you prepared to share the names today?
I'm so sorry, I thought that you were doing that, Andy, I apologize.
Because it says approved, approved committee member.
Yep, yep, that's, that's my mistake, I misunderstood, and do you have a, do you have a list there though, Jake said he was, or, or Jake, you were saying, you know this from Sam, not that you have a list. So you guys.
It says a request at the bottom, and I would, I knew you called Samantha, so, I didn't know if you had for us to.
Yep, I do. I can put this in the chat, I don't know if that's, if that's gonna work or not. There are, right now, let's see, I think there's six individuals that have said yes, and two individuals that have agreed to be alternates, so to have a seven-member committee, we do need to appoint one more person unless we're making an assumption that one of the alternates is filling that seventh position, we have a request out to one more person. And once I hear back from them, perhaps at the next meeting, we can determine if we wanna appoint, appoint that person, so, I don't know, Andy, if you can, I don't know how to share these names, other than in the chat.
I move we approve Catherine Haley, Donald Poole, George Kendrick, Allison Tebow, Tebow, Avery Anthony, and Shelby Smith as committee members of the newly development, development corps, and Sam Carter, and Tom Anthony as alternates.
Thank you, Thompson.
Thank you.
No, same.
Sorry about that, yeah, sorry Jake, sorry Sam. I always do that.
Uh, someone, seconded by Bill. All those in favor? Yeah, hopefully, wise.
So you could probably get Samantha to do like, if there's too often, then she probably don't really need to, I'm sure she's choked quite a few.
Old Business Capital Project.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Gabe.
Thank you.
I think, I think yesterday, or this morning, the update from Warden and Curran on the garage site in the bridge. There are a couple action items on there that they're recommending. The garage facility, the survey was, all the pins were put in last week. So they're finalizing the deep description for that. The closing documents have been shared with, you know, between the attorneys, and so at this point, it'll be, I think, the seller's attorney is out this week on vacation, I think, they said, so probably next week. This one will finally close on it. The recommendation is to contract with Mills to install the septic system and make the site preparations for the salt sand shed, as well as the site prep for the existing structures, so we can have to raise the grade up on the one side, so that it can accommodate the entry of the vehicles. That's, I guess, one recommendation, another action item, if that's something you wanna authorize them to be doing that work, they can get started on that within the next few weeks, or right after the closing. If you wanted to have them do that.
I would, yeah.
So, we should probably, you know, see exactly what the improvements are, you know, of itemized less. You know, just, yeah, you know, for the, yeah, I mean, just to see what, exactly what they recommend we do, and what we, you know, what we actually need to do. I mean, there's like a recommendation, for example, for putting a shower in.
Oh, I thought you meant for the work that Mills was gonna do.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
To, to, to update the existing structure.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that we should definitely see, but I mean, for them to do the septic and.
Oh, yeah, oh, okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I, yeah.
I was confused.
No, no, I was, I was confused.
And I think we should make a motion that we have Mills do the septic and do the site work, so that we can get you know, salt sheds supposedly gonna come anytime, we need to have that leveled off and ready to go.
Okay, that is a motion?
Second.
Seconded by Pam Alley?
Sorry. When we say Mills, is that the end of? The end of, I mean, Jake, cause I know he was looking to stay longer and. With this garage, with ethic garage, some members, like he's getting extra work out of it. Be as much of a.
Hit to him financially, if he's having to find a new place for his garage business, right? Opera shop.
He was looking to stay on November first.
Yeah, he said that was fine.
Yeah.
Okay, he's fine with that, alright, I'm not sure, I know, I know he's working with. I'm sure, so.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
The other item Eric started to bring up was the finalizing, you know, what renovations and all that work. Brent and company did kinda give us a preliminary layouts. I think there was two different options and one of them didn't require, you know, modifying beams and some of the carrying pieces in there. Samantha, I think, you know, to the point, you know, we don't have an itemized, you know, breakdown of what each kind of aspects, I don't think, gonna cost yet, so we wanted to have something like that before. Making a decision, you know, we know approximately what's left with the, an amount not to exceed one point six million. About eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if you consider the salt shed purchase, the acreage and building purchase and the other work that's been put in so far. You know, so he's confident that that modification, that we're, you know, renovation, if you will, or rehab of that building can certainly be done within that amount. In that he was recommending whether you wanna move forward with the low bidder from, when those bids did come in before, although it was overbid. They've expressed an interest to continue to work with and modify numbers, the recommendation is that you consider working with. I think the Sheridan Corp. To do that, to carry out that work, I guess what you can decide whether you, one, you wanna do that, or also if you wanna. Still wait, I mean, at some point, you gotta be able to move forward on, on the interior stuff, so I don't know. You wanna try and get something back before next meeting from them to have a better idea? Presumably it's gonna take a working meeting in between or, or the next selection meeting for you to have some input or feedback, or someone from the board that have input and feedback with the engineers, I guess.
I mean, I have no problem with, if they recommend Sheridan to work, I don't have no problem with that. But, yeah, I just feel like, you know, there were some recommendations from Warden and Current that were pretty.
Well, I mean, we haven't even picked a layout yet, have we?
No.
I think there was, there was one, there was really two, and one of them had some cost savings if you went with it. Try and keep it low, they had acknowledged that when they did the preliminary drawings. But other than that, I mean, they talk about having, you know, doors down the side of the building, for example. You know, if you don't, I mean, we need to, I guess now, we're at the point where you need to have the input to tell them what your thoughts are and what you do or don't want in that building.
If we need to have a plan, look at it.
Right, you know.
Discuss it.
Right, you know, like, one of the, you know, some of the plans come for a shower, for example, which to me seems excessive, yeah. They can, show it at home.
So they probably need to have an Iowa station, that was that.
Yeah, and that's what, yeah, but that's, then that's reasonable, yeah, we don't need a.
Yeah, cause they're not gonna be sleeping there.
No.
Do you wanna wait till your next meeting, two weeks from now, or do you wanna try and schedule a workshop in between with the engineers, either the whole board or some of the people from the board?
I think we should build.
I, I can't.
I mean, and. I'd say we just wait till the next meeting because we'll have to make it, we'll vote right then and there, so if, and everyone can't come then. You know, if we can't have a quorum, then.
What do you wanna do?
The next, I just said the next two weeks, I.
If everything moves forward expeditiously, where is the public works crew gonna spend the winter?
I mean, at this point, we're, you know, gonna be split this winter between the two buildings, probably. The salt shed, I think that when we had to approve that last meeting, they were what, twelve to sixteen weeks before it would be delivered?
Right.
It was January that it would be up.
And when does Sheridan think they can start, after November first, obviously?
Well, Jim's, Jim's actually on the, on the column, it's appropriate to have him talk, you know, too much about it without having all the plans and everything laid out, but. You know, obviously the sooner it's finalized, I mean, I don't know what their turnaround time would be if you're working with them to start.
So if, if we go forward and they do all the things, do all the things recommended. They're saying we have eight hundred and fifty thousand in the budget, is that what's necessary to update that building?
That's what, I think you guys need to have a workshop to talk with them about, hopefully, hopefully not.
I don't think we need to spend that much.
But, you know, not knowing, not knowing the particulars and the specifics of.
Yeah.
What's being called to be modified in that structure.
Say, I mean, I could be available before next, and I could be available next week.
I, I can too, but.
I just, don't hold it up because of me, I'm just.
Well, you mean, you're gonna be away?
No, I'm.
Yeah, you're home working.
I'm gonna be working fourteen, sixteen hours a day.
Well, I don't know, it's gonna take one ten minutes to go decide what we wanna do.
When can, when can they be, can you ask him that?
The engineers?
Yeah.
I'd say give a couple of dates and.
So you wouldn't be able to meet like at five o'clock, five thirty?
I mean, we can meet without him and then he can load on at the next thing, I mean.
Right.
Don't hold it up because of me, I'm just.
Today's the twenty ninth.
I can pretty much, as long as it's, as long as it's at like four or five o'clock.
Yeah, when you, the sixth, which will be next week at five o'clock.
Trying to see if they're available to do a workshop.
Next Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay. If that works, if that works for me, I don't know what anyone.
At five o'clock?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll be on.
Okay.
Tuesday, the sixth, I will be available.
Okay, how about Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Yeah, what about Wednesday, the seventh? At five o'clock.
What about?
Yeah, five.
And Andy and I will have an E O C meeting presumably next Wednesday, but that's not.
Six, but we're talking about five, right?
Yeah.
If we can do it.
I would think we'd be down.
An hour ought to be able to get an awful lot of work done.
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday at five o'clock.
Hopefully.
What about the seventh?
Confirm tomorrow if that works with them.
If not.
Well, yeah, we can, we have, yeah, right, we have.
See what works with them, I mean, obviously we can't do two days.
I mean, if you want, you can just have, maybe just two of you represent the board at, at a workshop meeting with them to really go through the fine, fine comb stuff if you want, and then present. The rest of it to the full board at, at thirteen.
Yeah, well, if you can't meet on Wednesday, me and Eric could do Tuesday, Pam, right, you said you could be here on Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
I mean, if Wednesday doesn't work.
Right.
For them.
Try Wednesday and, yeah, but Tuesday also, really, Andy, late afternoon.
Right.
So what day do you?
We're gonna do, we're gonna do.
Andy's gonna ask them. Andy's gonna ask them for hopefully the seventh, but if that doesn't work, we might have to move it.
No, that's fine, I just.
Okay, so we made all the necessary motions for that, for the time being, now Karen plays bridge.
So the engineers have been working with the only bidder on that project and have. Found ways to reduce through different designs and other modifications to reduce the cost by. Two hundred and thirty thousand. Thereabouts, and it puts it within ten thousand dollars of what was, or between ten and fifteen thousand dollars of what was approved not to exceed. For the loan purpose, and we do have some money in a reserve fund for that project, so.
How is it, it's four hundred and sixty thou, have we already spent a hundred thousand? How was it fifteen thousand over?
The four hundred and sixty is the construction cost.
The contingency.
Right, so then you have the engineering fees, the contingency, the, the permit fees, the, you know, the bond, the fees for getting the bond.
Will they, will the D M R or not D M R, but D P even less, do what we wanna do?
Hmm?
Okay.
That'd be, yeah, that permit was issued already, it's available, I think, no, we actually got a exception to start earlier, but. And the November first start date's a little, not gonna happen at this point. So they would ask for a shift in the schedule so that they'd be able to complete it by June first of twenty twenty-one. As opposed to hoping to have ended, ended before, I think, this coming spring, so it's a couple of months shift.
I thought it said from May twenty-second to June first, that's not much of a shift, that's nine days.
A few weeks, or a week.
So, my pages didn't quite print the most.
No, man, I didn't either.
Alright.
So.
Says from, the complete date from May twenty-second to June first, which I wouldn't think would be a problem, we're just hoping to have it done before Memorial Day, obviously.
They'll, they'll wanna be done before Memorial Day, I'm sure they'll. The last couple.
It's only giving them nine more days, as long as the D P lets them.
So this also being an appropriate time, though, for us to discuss as a board. Phil, you brought up in meetings past about the granite facade and wanted to remove the. Shaw Creek, so we, and I feel like the rest of the board, though, said that we're in favor of it, but we wanna see. Cost and what that would do to the bottom line, so Andy, was it forty-nine thousand that we just looked at before the meeting, approximately?
Yeah, I think when the, the bids came in before, there was a line that allowed for a deduction for the. The granite block facade wasn't done, it was, I think, forty-eight, about forty-eight thousand. And was what, what it was valued at before to, you know, potential savings, if you did, if you know.
So what do you, I think Eric and you were, you, you, are you talking about removing the Shaw Creek? And you're talking about putting in new granite, like, on the inside or what?
They need to, they need to dismantle that.
Right.
Substructure, that granite, and they need to put some back to retain the.
Size.
The size, but whether it all goes back or not, that's what the, that's what the hope is for, but. I think with these bid mods, the only way to get it below that amount right now would be to not do it.
So is that, that four sixty number would not include?
Based on, yeah, based on how this reads, several additional value items were identified, including reducing width of the temporary road. As long as it's wide enough to take a fire truck or a delivery truck, tractor trailer, fine. And eliminating the granite facade underneath the culvert structure and reducing the bitumous pavement thickness.
I think it's a lot of money for ten foot bridge, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I think everybody thinks that.
Abandon it.
Yeah, tell them to fend for themselves, start their own town. So.
Everyone likes granite so much, give up ten dump trucks and just dump it in the middle and pay you over.
Yeah, really, that'd probably be cheaper.
Yeah, you think?
Yeah. A lot cheaper. So. Yeah, I guess it just sounds like the granite isn't an option right now, is what I'm getting from it.
Yeah. Is that something that can be done at a future date?
Potentially, I mean.
Well, they're gonna remove the, they're gonna remove the granite anyway, as a part of the construction and put it back, right, what, put back what they need.
Go back what they need, yeah.
So. If that's the case, I don't think the Shaw Creek's an issue because. If need be, they could just turn the granite around.
That's true.
Okay.
Yeah.
On the other hand, I could peel it up by hand pretty readily. For less than forty thousand dollars.
As long as you're feeling okay.
I move, we award a construction contract to Jake Barber. Seconded by Donald Poole, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Alright, motion passes.
I'm gonna wait for more stuff that's gonna be.
Okay, new business, R F P responses, open and review bids, or thank you.
Correct.
Went back through my emails and they're all emailed to me, I don't think we get anything in the mail, email was fine, but. Unless I missed one, we only got two that came back. One had acknowledged that unless we had an account open with them already currently, they weren't going to some, they're not accepting new, you know, these new rates or these new loans right now. So these are what we got back from Camden and the first for both projects.
Say we go with the first.
Just to make that, like, for which note, like, for both notes or?
Yeah.
So Jake has made a motion to accept the, and how many years, yeah, so specify years, please, sorry.
Well, were we looking at five on the pavings, is that what we were looking at, or three?
No more than seven, if you go with five years at that rate, it'd be thirteen thousand eight hundred in interest. If you go with three, you'll save five grand, if you go with seven, you'll be another eight.
So we save five grand by going to three years?
Right. What should we increase, do we increase your payment, you know, substantial, your principal payment?
Right, yeah.
For a five grand for three years, it's only.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say we'd splutter it out over five, that's just mine.
I would recommend.
Yeah, so. How would you tidy up your motion then?
I make a motion that we, we go with the first for five years on the pavement principle.
I'll second that motion, any discussion? All those in favor? Now, the big one, though.
So what's the difference between fifteen and twenty years for the interest?
Yeah, at fifteen years, it's three hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred in interest at that rate, at two six four, and at two nine one, for twenty years, it's four hundred and ninety-five thousand nine hundred. It's about forty.
You said three forty-two to four ninety-one?
Three forty-two to four ninety-five, so a hundred and.
Hundred fifty thousand, yeah. Interest.
Say a hundred fifty thousand dollars in interest in five years.
Grand a year.
So what's it gonna, what would the payment be versus fifteen years or twenty years?
Over a hundred.
Still gonna be over, you know. Well, it's gonna be over a hundred thousand dollars, just over.
It'll be probably one, twelve thousand a month, maybe?
It'd be twenty-two thousand a year. On the fifteen years for just the interest. Plus another hundred and six thousand a year for principal.
Hundred twenty-eight thousand?
That's about, not much more than ten thousand amount.
Hundred twenty-eight K for, that's on the fifteen year?
Yeah, at twenty years, you're eighty thousand a year on principal for the twenty-year payback. You're paying. Another twenty-four thousand a year, eight hundred. For the interest.
It's a hundred four. So.
What's the savings on interest if we go with ten years?
At ten years, at ten years, it's two hundred and three thousand five hundred, as opposed to three forty-two at fifteen years. But your principal payment's gonna be extremely high, you got a lot of capital projects coming up, like. If you can spread it out a little bit longer, I would recommend it, cause there are gonna be some big shorter-term ones coming up.
That's, this is also if we.
Right, right.
We can get.
So what was the call for fifteen?
The fifteen years at two point six four percent, the addition, the interest on that is three hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred and one.
But I mean, the annual.
The annual payment on that one, at fifteen years, at that rate would be hundred and twenty-eight, hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
So not quite eleven thousand.
See, how old is, okay, that building now is.
So we're basically.
Six, seven years old right now?
I mean.
Yeah, so either way, it would.
I make a motion, we go with the fifteen years from the first for the D P W facility.
Second.
Seconded by Phil Crossman, any discussion?
So these are the only responses we got? Yeah, I had two that I didn't get back, and one that said that they just weren't. Putting rates out for people that weren't already currently established as customer, and they were one that we had had a loan with before, but.
John said the time.
Ben Gore. Not Ben Gore, sorry, Barhart. Not Ben Gore, sorry, Bar Harbor.
Well, that's fine, whatever.
Well.
They don't need it, you don't want any of that.
Any more discussion? So we've spent about twenty-four thousand more a year on our. You know, and what we have to help for annual debt service, but. But it would save quite a, you know, it's, it's pretty significant, a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Over the course of those years, which is about seventy-five hundred dollars a year, no, more than seventy hundred dollars a year, more like a thirty, thirty, yeah. Yeah, okay, all those in favor? Terrible, is that sort of math, like dreadful, dreadfully terrible.
Good thing all you have is a truck on here.
Yeah, well, yeah. It just sign your life away right years, I don't even, and that's not true Jake, I do not have a truck home.
That's, that's next.
It's gonna shock you what the differences between you pay and what you actually do that. I understand they have to make their money, but man.
So now that Donald Poole has, you know, given us that wonderful heads up and, you know, optimism, let's go to that.
Yeah.
I mentioned at the last meeting that the Camden rates were gonna be changing, uh, we have an option to go and convert it. Um, the sweep account to an ICS or not convert it to ICS and there'd be a difference in what those rates would be. Um, and so you see there, if we convert to ICS with Camden, it'd be a point one five percent interest rate. Um, if we don't convert, it goes down to point zero five percent and the point two five. Um, the first is offered, uh, a rate, we have accounts with them. Um, for some of the reserve funds that we put in there last year, we just, because the interest rates and the CDs are so low, we just, I just rolled it into a checking account, so it's, it's just there. Um, so that with an account there, they were willing to offer, uh, point four percent for all of our accounts.
You're better off putting one big lump sum and that one will take you.
Yeah.
How, how long are these rates, I did not know locked in or anything, right, it's just prevailing, aren't raised?
Right.
I'm assuming that's as low as they're gonna go though, private.
Hopefully that'll be lower than that. It's not good news for all of us.
I don't know how slow they can go.
The first, you know, um, Jake Miller, if you know him, he had emphasized, um, a lot of the importance of the relationship with the bankers, um. You know, Camden. Obviously understands if, you know, when they share the rate that we, you know, if we had to shop around, we, you know, they obviously understood that and. You know, there is a better rate out there than what they're offering, um, and we think when it comes to the. The not having the brick and mortar, can we still do the banking and still get our needs met, um, they're willing to. Give us and train us on how to use the remote deposit capture, um.
Excuse me, they're willing to give us what?
The device and the training on remote capture deposit. Um, so you could scan the checks right at the counter and they go in the bank. Um, whenever you do a deposit, uh, if there's cash, you can still go to an account at Camden. Um, and every, whatever frequency or whatever dollar amount, you know, we want, we can then. Cut a check from there and essentially transfer it to, to the first. So it's a minor bookkeeping thing, but otherwise.
I mean, for almost triple the. Interest, which isn't, still isn't really anything great, but. I mean, when you're almost triple on the rate, you kinda have to switch, don't you, you know what I mean?
I agree.
I move we go with the first National Bank. Seconded by Pam Alley, any discussion, more discussion? All those in favor? Sorry, Camden National?
I'm not surprised.
Yeah.
Not at all.
EDA grant funds, approved matching funds.
So we, after the last meeting, sharing some of that with you, we, um, had a meeting with Alan Brigham, um, with EDA. Um, to get some feedback from him, uh, the Water District has applied for, um, a grant to do the water main improvement. And so some of that can be used as a match, uh, we cut out. The part of the project under four that included the, the Water District building and relocation and town garage piece down there. Um, so with, with those modifications, um, that, that one being removed, um, the project total cost would come down to four point four five. Um. Yeah. So we're just waiting to hear back, um, from. Part of it is we need to know, you know, what is it, what match do we have available, you know, what do we, what can we offer, um, so what do we ask for? Um, right now, we're back and forth somewhere between. Like this time, um. We have two point one eight six, or two million one hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. Um, between the sidewalk and road reserve right now, the MPI grant at six twenty-five. And the Water District's, um. Grants, they get that, get awarded that at five hundred thousand dollars towards, towards matching funds.
And the sidewalk was a million, you said?
The.
Sidewalk slash road reserve?
Between the two of those, um. Right now, the reserve funds are one point, one million sixty-one thousand five hundred. Six hundred and thirty-five thousand of which has been committed to the MPI match. So we're left with four hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred. Um, between those two right now. If we, if we commit another, you know, the tax for tax year or for fiscal year twenty-two, uh, which we'll start planning for soon, um. If, if we continue on what we have been doing, it, the, the road reserve gets about thirty-five thousand a year, whatever the state gives us to, to split into the savings there basically, so it's about thirty-five grand a year. We've been given fifty thousand dollars to the sidewalk reserve, um, so if you continue that, it's another eighty-five thousand, um, for, for next fiscal year. But if we work down through the numbers that, you know, we've worked up since the last meeting, um, that brings a total grant project to four million three hundred seventy-three thousand between EDA's match. And with the town and the Water District and the MPI project can provide, so. It's a difference between the number on the screen here and that available fund of seventy-eight thousand eight hundred.
Sorry, so we have over four point three million in grant funding available?
Between cash, cash, you know, reserve, our, our reserve funds and our cash, basically.
Cash reserve, yeah.
And, and the commitment from the MPI project at six twenty-five, and if the Water District gets awarded their grant or their loan rather.
Yeah, so, but that's, that is a, we won't know how.
But how much, how much is that?
That's a five hundred thousand dollar match, um.
So if, so if that didn't come through, we'd, we'd still be at three point eight. You're saying.
That's if we get this EDI grant.
No, no, if we didn't get it, we'd be at three point eight, correct? You said we were at four point three, roughly seventy-eight thousand dollars away from that number up there. Correct?
So the way I did this works, you're right, we got our cash match at one million sixty-one thousand, MDOT MPI at six hundred and twenty-five thousand, the Water District in at five hundred thousand. Those equal two point one eight six million. EDA is fifty fifty and we get an additional, that same amount of funding back from them, which is a big if also. That's the four point three million. So if, if Water District's five hundred thousand is out, that's, that's basically, that's like saying it's a million dollars out. Cause look, you know, that's assuming a fifty fifty match.
And we'll know on. That, that one in January, and when do we know on the matching?
The EDA one?
Yeah.
We, I don't, Gabe, you recall, that's just on a rolling basis, I don't remember what Alan had said with the term on that might be.
Yeah, if we, you know, assuming we're applying within the next. Through, you know, like two or three weeks, I think it's a Jan, it, we would know in January.
You obviously don't commit anything until you get awarded, and we would wait to see if the Water District, I mean, it's part of just putting all that big project together. If, you know, best case scenario, it's awarded at that, that full amount, the two, two million one hundred eighty-six thousand. Um, you know, we've gotta find another eighty grand, um, of which is potentially to be no change in what we've appropriated the last few years if, if we could take. Next year's funding for sidewalks and roads. So.
It's a lot of big moving pieces here.
And it's also, you know, if I'm looking right there at that reconstruct critical intersections at Clinton Show Alley and Water Street. For a hundred eighty thousand dollars, and it seems like a. Them show out in Water Street both seem to be. Fine, I don't understand.
I think though, yeah, I think that, that the, the, so everything you see under three is, uh, those are the basis of the MPI grant. So we're essentially committed to, to doing those, um, based on the MPI.
Alright.
I think what we talked about, um, which we don't, you know, so, so having some cards to play, um, would be number four. Um, which essentially. Um, if we needed to make another cut, um, and it's really all gonna depend again on, um. We need to have one more conversation with Alan Brigham to see what his final opinion is on the level of, um. You know, what, sort of what is the most competitive, um, award that they're gonna give us, cause what we understand is that them. You know, doing two million for us would be very generous, so, um, that's what we're hoping to ask for, but if, you know, that's not necessarily what we're gonna get, so. Um, under Brent's suggestion was, you know, have a card to play if you need to cut something. Um, that in the future, it could be that this parking lot, and when I say the future, it could be an NBRC grant in the spring. That we look at just the parking lot, granted, we'll need to have match, we need a fifty percent match. But, um, you know, that, that could be another option, is that, that doesn't stay in this particular proposal, proposal, but goes into. The next grant that we write for NBRC.
So if we, if you were to eliminate everything on three and keep one, two and four, that's one point six eight million. So. Then what? Correct? Actually, I, I just tried to say, unless I missed a number.
Alright, I think I just need to understand your thought process behind illuminating three, cause it's.
Cause there is nothing you can take out of that, you just.
Right.
Oh, I see what you're saying, got you.
Yeah, so you know, if we, you know. I mean, the original intent of downtown work was the fact that the sidewalks are atrocious. Have to be fixed and that we have terrible problems with drainage.
Yep.
You know, and some of this other stuff is. I don't know, it's, you know, it's a lot of money and I don't really see how much, you know, benefit. Community as a whole really gains from.
From three and four, you're saying?
From, from three, from.
Just from three.
You know, you know, reconstructing the town parking lot to reduce flooding. You know, that will be, that will. You know, everything tells us that, you know, the parking lot will flood more and more often in its current form.
So you're losing me. What about number three, do you think we're gonna afford to do without?
Oh, um.
No, number three's the one that we can't.
Yeah, but. If we had to, but that's not, the grant's not funded all, all of three, we would, we would have to match. Half of that, correct, just through our cash, through our, through cash, correct?
I mean, it's a minimum of fifty fifty percent, right?
Thought we've already got one grant for six twenty-five that we have to use for some of those things in threes, is that what he just said?
Yeah.
So.
I'm, I'm.
Yeah, okay, um, um, okay.
So yeah, Eric, if we don't, if we don't do three, we don't get the six twenty-five, because the six twenty-five is contingent, from, from MDOT is contingent upon us doing number three. That is the, that is the, that's essentially the grant we applied for, for, for MDOT.
And the, these figures here are total costs of the project, correct?
The estimated ones.
Estimated total cost of the project.
Yeah.
It's cause we get into this fifty fifty matching that I don't know. I know I can get there, I'm just making sure, this is the total cost estimated for the project.
So I mean, if we have Main Street ripped up to do. Uh. The drainage and the sewer, I mean. And then the Water District can't come up with the money for the water pipe, what happens, we kick it in?
Yeah, in other ways.
Or we just, we leave a hundred and thirteen year old pipe under the ground after it's already been dug up.
Right, right. And then they dig it up when it fails, I mean, it, it, its capacity and its flow are fine right now, it's just we know it's a hundred and thirteen year old pipe and. At some point, it doesn't need to be replaced, uh, it was not, it doesn't know a whole lot at this point in terms of its age.
Right.
Um, and so it's just a matter, is it the?
That would be a typ- typical mile even thing, to rip up Main Street, then rip it up again another year.
Well, we can't get the money then, that's the way.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, what happens?
I, I think too guys that, um, you know, we don't wanna, I mean, I know we, at some point, we need to think like, if we don't get any money, what happens? But I think the conversation now is what funds of what we have are we committed to putting towards this project, and I think. I mean, I hope we can all agree, cause we all agreed on the downtown master plan that these are, these are not sort of fluffy extraneous things, these are critical infrastructure that need to be. Um, dealt with, and if, you know, if X is happening, then it makes sense to do Y, and honestly. Both the Water District, main, the main water engineers and, um, the EDA fund are looking at. The replacement of the water main as, um, s- sort of like the, the popular item on this list, so EDA really likes. That piece of this, um, proposal, and for, um, the Water District's application. Because they're applying for this in conjunction with this project. Um, it's my understanding through their engineer that, that through, through Main Waters engineer that, um, that, you know, that sort of. Increases their chances of receiving that, uh, loan award, um, or the, to, to be eligible for the loan. And then the possibility of the, there's a, there's a grant forgiveness component, because they're doing it in conjunction with this project, so. That's just to say, like, there's some pieces in this that I think we shouldn't look at as negotiable, if there is a piece that is negotiable because. We can get it funded possibly somewhere down the line, even next year, if we go after another NBRC grant, which we can do. It would be number four, and I say that number four is our wiggle room if we need to move some pieces around, but I think for the sake of this conversation, it's like. What do we have for, what do we, what have we put together for match? And then depending on, you know, what we get for an award, sort of what are we on the hook for? And that's sort of the, the question I think now is like, what are we committing? And then what might we be on the hook for depending on what we get for an EDA award?
Need a motion in a. Do we need something from us today, or is this just more informative, like?
Need motion for?
If, yeah, if, between now and the next meeting that we did wanna move forward with an application, we'll need something that shows the towns willing to commit. What it has left in those reserves, um, and that package together is a value of, with the Water District and the MPI is two million one hundred eighty-six thousand five eighty-four. You know, so we can commit to, to that, cause we have it, we can't commit to future funds, obviously, at this point.
Two billion one hundred eighty-six, what was it?
Five eighty-four.
Five eighty-four. So that's, that's the total, that's the total when you pull them all together.
Right.
So what we have, we've committed six thirty-five for the MPI. And the road and sidewalk reserve, um, I guess that expends all of the road reserve to match that and some of the sidewalk reserve. So the remaining out of what we have on cash is four hundred and twenty-six thousand five eighty-four. That's what's in the sidewalk reserve essentially, when you take out the MPI piece, your commitment. So that's what we would put towards, theory put towards, you know, the match for this project here.
And then hopefully the five hundred thousand of our district.
Right.
I make a motion that we. Reserve, what, use these reserve funds, is it just a reserve fund or is it two reserve funds? You said we used all the road reserve?
Yeah, I mean, if you wanted, say, to use the remaining balance of the road and sidewalk reserves. To be cash match for the EDA fund.
I mean, that why Andy just said my motion. Fair. To use the, to use the remainder of the sidewalk reserve and the road reserve to be our match for the EDA grant application, is that what you said, Andy?
Seconded by Phil Crossman, any more discussion? All those in favor? Here we go.
I mean, if we don't get the money, then how do we spend it?
We have a lot of work to do. Um. Alright, Lost County Shares dot tract.
We just, we're moving quickly.
So after I met with them, um, after our last meeting, um. I think the only substantive. I think the only substantial change they had that I'm recalling was the, they followed up after we met, after I met with them. Said the county would, they would not be recommending that there'd be a cost share for the second deputy, that vinyl haven would pay a hundred percent for the second deputy. What I went in with was asking for fifty percent.
So are they gonna give us fifty percent on the first deputy?
Yes. That 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 wouldn't change, right, so that's what it is now, is fifty percent for the, so I tried to break down. Given that we're already partially through the the current fiscal year. Best case scenario, given that there's usually, I think, a minimum of eight weeks to do P T O or six weeks to do P T O. Or F T O, if they bring someone on, so, you know, best case scenario, probably realistically, we're gonna December first for a second deputy. So with that assumption, I I worked through. Where I think we're at today, or what we can expect for this fiscal year, if if we don't have a deputy or if we have two deputies and neither of them. Live here and bring a family here with them, you know, we could get away with having a two bedroom house and they could just swap off when one's here, you know, and use, have each have their own room. Yeah, so we can keep, that cost is a little bit lower under that, under that assumption. But we add up across the board there, it'd be a cost at a hundred and eight thousand. For vinyl haven, just for the deputies' wages and living. So I have down on the bottom there, it's about forty two thousand dollars to be able to support fuel for the cruiser and routine maintenance. Items that are needed at the public safety building for an office. Asking for, and I don't know if we'll get this through the county still, but fifty percent instead of a hundred percent, but fifty percent of the transportation costs. You know, they fly, had to fly someone over, go on the ferry boat, or if there's charges for other services to go back and forth. I, they asked if that's something that could be shared, because.
It seems to make sense.
You know, part of the county and I don't think other towns get bills for mileage reimbursement when they transport someone from there to me, and I know we're different, our costs are higher.
Which is why we're still agreeing to pay fifty percent.
Right, but I, at this point, I haven't heard them pull that out specifically, but I'm hoping that they're willing to advocate for the fifty percent with the commissioners in the budget.
So this puts us about at the one fifty that we approved for.
So. What we still don't have, and this is a pretty critical piece, is some sort of guarantee that. That, yeah, or that they'll be living here on the, you know. You know, if their shift is Thursday to Sunday, you know, they'll be staying on the island Thursday and Friday night, Saturday night.
That's what we were trying to work out under.
And Sunday night, right?
And then Sunday, but they'll be, but then they do, you know. Oh, yeah, right, Sunday night, right.
So that's what, under our, under section two of the contract. That was something that they were talking about, so last year, you might recall. It went from twenty five dollars a day to seventy five dollars a day for the rotating deputies to account for. You know, the meals and just if they were having to go away for a detail or something, that's kinda how they were seeing it from the union's perspective. So if that's the, you know, how we look at it, you know, the sheriff was talking about, maybe the, maybe the seventy five dollars a day is only available if you spend the night. And not, it's like, otherwise, if you work forty hours, the way the union contract is, if you work forty hours a week on the island, you're entitled to twenty five dollars a day, you know, more than a hundred bucks a week extra. For the island detail. You know, so this increased last year when they had the rotation of people coming out to account for the other expenses they incur for coming and going. But if if we go with that seventy five dollars in theory as we did last year, but tie it to, well, they are spending the night. That part of that figure was to assume that they'd be available while they're here. That's how we had broken it down when in the last year, twenty five dollars a day is what was already being paid, twenty five dollars each night to be available. If there's a call out, and then another twenty five dollars for the detail coming to the island. On top of that, accounting for, well, I gotta get food, or I gotta bring this. And again, as if, from their perspective, as if that, when they go for training or other other things that they travel for. So if if we tie that seventy five dollars a day to someone who actually stays here, that was what the thought was, is an incentive to make sure they're here. Surely that would be enough.
But it's not to exceed a total three hundred per week.
Right.
So that's four nights.
That's more than.
Per person.
That would have been more than they were getting last year, right? Ain't that right? No.
No?
I mean, they were four, they were, I guess in some cases, they might have been just three nights, some were four nights, but.
It was twenty five bucks a night.
Last winter was seventy five, when they were doing the rotation of deputies and they were coming out for their four shifts, they were getting seventy five dollars a day to be available. For the shift, for the after hours, and just for the, for the, you know.
But it, but it wasn't, you know, that wasn't enough, really, because the deputy was going back to North Haven.
No, this was when we had the rotation.
Okay, I'm sorry, but. I don't know. I mean, I understand that when you're not working, you're not working and we don't own you. But at the same time, if they can't, if we can't assure the town that we have somebody spending the night here. Then what was the point of this whole past several months?
I guess I don't, I don't know what more our contract, if I have a recommendation for the contract to solidify that. All I can tell you is that they're committing to rotate people out here, like they did last year if they need to, for a few days at a time. I don't know how soon we'll get two people to work out throughout the week to get seven, seven nights a week, but that's what they're asking for.
We'll be getting someone forty hours, we already have them, right?
Right now, they've been filling forty hours and they've been daytime shifts.
But when we sign the contract, that'll go to the ten to, two to ten or whatever the shift was you said, noon to ten.
I know the, I know in October, they're gonna be sending people out like they did last winter when they were rotating people and they're gonna start rotation until they can fill the spot. So we're gonna have at least that, and if as soon as soon as they can fill the spot and get someone out here to fill the, fill the other second spot, we'll have seven nights a week.
Well, I think you should make that change to the the seventy five dollars, it's twenty five dollars per day. With overnight, whatever you, however you word it, you know. That should be tied to that, I think, I think that is, I mean, there isn't any other way, we can't write it into the contract that they have to stay here, right?
They can agree to a contract that says they're willing to stay here, but you can't tell us, you can't.
But this is, I mean, that would be with the individual deputy, that's a totally separate contract.
Right, and that's what the sheriff was talking about with the union agreement between the employer, the county and the deputies.
And that's what this is.
They can't through that agreement for someone. We're agreeing not with the deputy to serve us, we're agreeing with the administration to provide a certain amount of services, so that's where that. You can't, you know, if you were signing it with a deputy specifically, found someone willing to adhere to all this, that would be fine. But as an employer, you know, that's where he was trying to explain, his hands are kinda tied in that sense.
Yeah, and I don't disagree. So, yeah, so just make that modification.
On the housing section, did this, did they change it back where the town's responsible for the lease agreement deposit? I thought we were trying to get away from that. I worded it that we provide an allowance.
Yep.
Instead of saying provide housing, we'll provide, we'll provide a housing allowance.
Says the deputy is responsible for.
A case of a rental, you know, the town should be responsible for any lease agreement deposit. Right. Is that? Do I have that wrong, dude? I just didn't remember correctly, I thought we were trying to get away from leaving the, the lessy. Well, if we got a better solution, I haven't found one yet, I mean, just for example. I know they're trying to get someone to, they're gonna change the schedule to get someone out here in October, it's a rotation of deputies, I don't expect a rotation of deputies. The county hasn't been willing to take on, you know, we didn't reimburse them.
Right, if there's a rotation, if someone's not living here, I get that, then we, we're gonna have to find a place.
And that's where if it's a full time, that first sentence, if it's a full time, any full time resident deputy could be provided a housing allowance, including heating, fuel, electricity. Not with those amounts. I tried to word that in a way that, we have to acknowledge. If there's a rotation of people, it becomes harder, I told them we could certainly help find housing, we could certainly help coordinate it with people who've done in the past, if it becomes that case.
But the actual obligation for providing housing, for finding housing is with them, according to this contract, no, with us, right? We can offer to help, and we will.
That's if we get a full time one.
A resident deputy, they're gonna be responsible for finding the, and provide.
The allowance.
The allowance, thank you.
I think that's.
But the housing has, but you know, nothing on this, it says the housing has to be on by North Haven.
Yeah, full time resident deputy.
Full, okay, it's.
It says full time.
So what do you, you just need our emotion from us to allow you to sign the contract if they sign?
So our step is to, if you guys, if the if the board is in favor of what's presented in the draft here. With the exception of the fifty percent for the second deputy. So then the county said that they're asking, but they. Expect that full cost of the second deputy to be on, on the town. I think that was the only other thing that I didn't change from since our meeting, my meeting with them. It is asking the county to provide the vehicle. You know, in this contract going forward. Will provide fuel and routine maintenance, if you agree to that, as we do now. It shifts the computer and I T stuff back to the county. Didn't make any sense to me why we were in the middle of their I T scheduling challenges, issues and computer needs.
And did they update the time period? Cause it's taking us like half way through next. Says November first, twenty twenty to December thirty first, twenty twenty one, so it's a thirteen month contract.
Right, yeah, so they're, they're, they're in North Haven's fiscal years are calendar years. And so.
Yeah.
One or, one or, one or the other is kinda stuck in the middle of their fiscal year. And they were hoping that it'd be amenable to lining up with their fiscal year and and North Haven's for contract purposes to just renew at the same time. So if we have conversations and end up working together on the contracts, if you do it.
That's fine with me, I can switch to a calendar year.
That's fine, as long as come next June, that town meeting, it doesn't fail again. And then you run, we run out of money and, you know, we run out of money and we'd be in violation of the contract, obviously.
Well, let's hope we don't have any incidents.
But, you know, but that possibility does exist. I mean, if, I mean.
Can you write that into the contract?
I mean, the, presumably, the town would understand that they've signed a contract obligating at least for half of the fiscal year. Otherwise, otherwise, you're in breach of the contract that you've signed, right? And there's generally a, some sort of cost to getting out of that.
Presumably.
You'd say, presumably, you're not gonna wanna challenge that, but I guess.
We can terminate.
Right.
So there is a, we would, if it did be approved, we would have to terminate.
Right, we would, yeah, right, we wouldn't be on the hook for those last six months. We'll just be services rendered too.
Kinda similar to what we do right now.
Yeah. Okay, anything else, anyone, anyone okay?
So summarize for me, if you would please, what we can expect for coverage if we execute this contract and when?
I can't give you the when, I mean, it's the contract from November first through December of twenty one. They need to be able to fill it, you know, hiring a second person to be able to fill another forty hours a week out here is something they gotta try and find.
If they can only find the one person, what could we expect and when?
Well, I think I mentioned mid Oc, I think by, in October, they're gonna shift to sending a rotation of people out here to spend like they did during the early parts of winter last year. To spend three, is it three nights, four days out here, as we had before. With whatever frequency until the next, until they come back again, but I mean, they'd be doing that every week, there'd be someone else out here.
For three nights and four days?
I, I think so, I don't have, I haven't seen this scheduled printed, but that's how it worked last year, so I assume it would be the same, it's forty hours. It would, to do that, it's three nights minimum, four days, one day on either end.
And then if they find a person, fill the second slot, we'd have seventy hours.
Probably eight. I, it's, the contracts were no less than seventy, but it also is, again, is, as it says in there, contingent upon them being able to have the staffing to do it. Just like, just like if we were to hire someone, you still gotta fill the position, you can't, you gotta be able to have the people to do it. So presumably, again, it makes them start, as soon as it's signed, it has to be signed by this board and the county commissioners. So if it's agreed to by you, the commissioners meet, I think, the, in two weeks, and they could take this up then. Hopefully, hopefully agree to it if it's a contract that you agree to. So once that starts, we'd be able to.
Right.
So the rotating officers, deputies, we need to find a two bedroom apartment, apartment or rent, whatever.
Fairly certain I've secured that.
Okay, well, that's good. That would be nice.
Okay.
Makes me feel better about.
So if we, I think probably this is the best we can hope for with Knox County, but it's nowhere near good enough for the town. Right now, I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not good enough for the town, right now, there are people in town who are literally being driven out of their homes because it's so bad. And others who are waking up in the middle of the night because they've been exposed to explosive fireworks one night after another, after another. And we're not providing the protection we need for those people, this is not doing it.
Well, right now, we're not, but with this contract with, with someone here overnight on duty.
Three nights a week.
That, but if, that'll be one, that's.
Three nights, four days, and every single.
If they started. If they start at noon time and go to ten o'clock at night, four days in a row, how the heck do they get out of here without spending four nights?
I think when they did it last time, they shifted that last day, so it was a earlier start time and they were on the last boat.
It doesn't make any difference for what I'm talking about, four nights is not good enough, three nights is not good enough, six nights is not good enough. As long as people continue to behave the way that they are and cause the country to stress their economy.
But with two.
Full time coverage is the only thing that'll take care of it, and this isn't gonna do it.
But with two, two deputies, you would get that, you would get, you'd get seven days.
But we have to sign this contract before Knox County's gonna hire a second person to come out here, they're not gonna hire someone. With no place to send them, so if we don't sign this contract, there's gonna be zero nights out here.
I'm not suggesting we not sign the contract, I'm just pointing out that this is the best we can do, but it's not good enough.
Right.
But we should sign the contract.
But as long, you know, as long as they can find it.
And hopefully, after we sign the contract, they can find someone and by the first of the year, they'll have another one, hopefully, I mean, that's what we can hope for.
Hopefully before that, hopefully.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully by the first of the year, at the latest, we'll have seven nights a week coverage.
Right. And, yeah, so.
We don't have any say on that, when they work their hours.
I think we, it says in there, we do, it talks about the.
So then, we shouldn't let them get out of here with spending three nights. They should work the same, you know, they should either work from ten to eight or noon to. Or noon to ten, or whatever the shift, I can't remember what Andy said they used to do.
Whatever it is, the best we can hope for is better than nothing.
Right, but we shouldn't, we shouldn't allow them to work from six to four, so they can get on the boat.
Well, and it's gonna change, the schedule's gonna change, so they'll be out of here two or nine.
Cause we don't really need someone working at five A M, we need someone working at nine A M, nine P M, so.
We need coverage from like four to two A M.
Yeah.
Have you been getting the daily, or it hasn't come in the last week or so, but.
I saw one, but I couldn't really make head to tails, I mean, I know when it's at North Haven, what was happening, but.
I, I know, with, you know, even without seeing the license plate, I knew, I won't say the name in a public meeting, but, yeah, I knew exactly what it's. Yeah, that was submitted from.
No, I'm not talking, I'm talking about the reports from Knox County. In terms of the contract and accountability and communication, are those reports that come in and whatever frequency they come, you know, they were a few days in a row, and then I haven't seen them for almost a week. And it talks about, you know, the time, the deputy, the incident type, you know, whether it was closed out, the town it was in, is that, when it gets to the accountability piece, is that?
I mean, that's better than nothing, but are we still gonna get another report besides that, like quarterly or monthly?
Says monthly.
Right.
They'll need this monthly, at least.
Monthly in-person check in. Yeah, I mean, I think that, hopefully that should be good.
More than we were getting before.
And if we're getting a monthly check in, we can.
Why haven't we done this?
And but we can also, we can also check the, the logs if we get them. I've, I've seen a couple of different ones probably done.
I haven't read, I haven't read them very closely on that.
I look down and, I mean, it says.
The officer, the town, the type of incident, and then it goes closed and then. Like they had to have someone sign up on it usually, like if it was closed. So I mean, I mean, I, I don't think we can ask for. They didn't put the names in there. They just put the incident, what time.
Certainly much better.
Better than, better than nothing. And then hopefully the monthly check in will be something that's substantial, you know? Or we should try and make it something substantial that we can get some information on, you know? What he sees, what he thinks needs to happen, what we've seen, what we think he needs to be doing or she.
On, hopefully that's the point of the, the monthly, right?
That's our thing. We shouldn't just let him come up here and hand us the paper and.
No, they should be accountable and that should be an in-person meeting where they. Take our questions, our concerns.
And they should tell us if they have concerns. And we should tell them if we have concerns, so. I mean, that's where we're gonna get some accountability is where I'm, what I'm hoping for.
I hope we sign the contract. Seconded by Jake Thompson. Any more discussion? All those in favor? All right. Yeah, like, yeah, six to zero. My right hand.
Do you have a copy to sign or will you have the copy to sign?
I gotta just change that fifty, that fifty percent to the second deputy to a hundred percent.
So you'll have it.
But I can have it in the morning.
I'll have the day off. Yeah. All right. Social media and public record archive social proposal.
Uh, so this was a company that's reached out to me a few times. Um, it's the only one that's done so, but I think you're all aware. If you've gone through your training and remember the FOA requests, uh, you know, freedom of access. You know, so when someone puts a request in. Obviously, it depends on what they're asking for, but it, it might be emails, it might be just records that we have, old town records, you know, we have to go back and look for, for information. If it's in a computer, it's a lot easier to search and, and find that stuff because you can keyword search. Otherwise, you're looking through every single meeting minute that's written. Um, when it comes to social media, that's something that obviously more towns are you doing, you know, using more and more. Um, also is information in, in public record that needs to be searchable and available if, if a request comes in for it. You know, so this is a company that would be able to help make that so it's archived and searchable. And, and available for any sort of information requests. They only mentioned, I think, two towns in Maine that I recall. I think Rockport was one that they're working, they've been working with for a few months now. Um, there was one other that they mentioned, I can't remember. We don't get a lot of freedom of access requests. And I think most of the times if we get some, it's pretty small and easy to just deal with. You know, but you can never account for if something does come in and then a comment's been deleted, for example, that's, you know, that's what they're looking for. You just. You know, you can't fill that, that request. And it's on us to make sure that we're able to store that information. In our records. And so this, the software, you know, this company would be able to figure what the frequency is, but you can set the frequency to. Save it. So even if someone posted something and half hour later deleted it, it's been saved. So that's, that's the benefit of that.
So we have to keep every public comment?
Yeah, any, any communication that's significant or has significance to.
How long do you have to archive these things?
Uh, depends on what it is. Um, each, each type of thing is a different frequency depending on what the, you know, what the issue is or the.
You're gonna have a huge database, a huge amount of information to store.
Then what's the importance of that to you or to us?
Well, if we get a FOA request, it'd be certainly a lot easier.
If what?
If we get a FOA request for the information and we can't access it, you know, it's something that could be put on the town to say, well, you need to keep a record of these. You know, if you don't, if you don't, if you're not keeping that, it's a whole nother potential problem.
Seems like maybe the easier, you know, it seems like the easiest solution, you know, I think the Facebook page is fantastic for providing information, but. At, at two hundred dollars a month.
Turn the comments off.
You can't.
And, or in that case, delete the account. I, you know, I can't, I cannot, I, I cannot see the time it's spending and maybe face being, you know. Maybe given Facebook business anyway, it's not a good thing anyway anymore.
So if we could talk about that in the context of being, uh, open and community given engaging the community, I guess what would be the alternative if that is a popular source of data information?
The website. I mean, if we're gonna be spending two hundred dollars a month, so to make sure someone can't delete that comment, that's kind of, we should just get rid of Facebook.
Well, it's not this, I mean, it's not for that. It's to store the information because it could be requested. I, I understand the.
I mean, not every town does this, right? And it's just a matter of saying, hey, you are kind of at risk because you don't do it. It's not, you know. Just say a lot of towns are at risk. We're not, we're not the only one that doesn't use this.
Even if it's not someone that works for the town, you're supposed to archive every comment by every idiot that writes on Facebook. That doesn't even seem right. If it was one of us saying something and then we deleted it because we're, you know, an elected person, I could see that, you know, needing to store that kind of information, but. I mean, there's a lot of people that have accounts that are fake or, you know, I mean, we have to store everything that, I mean.
So as you said, most towns do not use this sort of service. So let's say we get a FOA request and we cannot come up with. The information to fulfill that request. And you say we, we, we run it out of problems. What is that problem? Someone saying. You've been a very, very bad boy or?
I couldn't tell you. I don't know. It could be, it could be, it could be a lawsuit. It could be a, you know, I don't, I don't.
Seems like the more appropriate.
I'm, I cannot, I cannot.
Can't turn off comments.
It's just a function that they don't allow.
It should be noted that. This is now ancient history, but in twenty seventeen, shortly after President Trump was inaugurated, he started blocking people on his personal Twitter account. That were trolling him, saying negative things about him. And the appeals court immediately ruled that he. Eyes POTUS, he was not allowed to block people from commenting on his tweets.
But does this apply only to Facebook?
No, any social, any social media.
We also have an Instagram account, which we, which is pretty inactive, but we do have it.
I can set up so any post that goes to Facebook goes there.
Okay. We have an Instagram account.
Right, but I didn't hear what Andy said, but it's gonna be the problem. What did you say about the Instagram? Or what did you just say after Eric said that about Instagram?
I said nearly every post that gets on Facebook automatically goes to the Instagram because there are people that will use both or one or the other. And it was all, all that's in an effort to communicate the town's dealings, which is what I think. Certainly the staff were under the impression we were trying to do and if this, I guess a step backward that you wanna take, we just need to know. But I don't know. It's a significant communication tool. I wouldn't recommend eliminating him.
At any rate, I'm, you know, someone else can make a motion and you guys can vote how they want, but I'm not going to vote for. Two hundred dollars a month for this.
How many, how often do we get FOA requests?
Right now, not that often.
I, I understand that it could become a problem. I, but I, I tend to agree with this board. I don't see why we'd spend two hundred dollars a month on something like that. Honestly.
They just sent this to you and you're bringing it to us, right? Basically.
You didn't.
Not something that you're recommending.
What do you call those requests?
Freedom of Information Act. That's what the acronym is, right?
Freedom of access now.
Oh, sorry.
But yeah.
Well, anyway, I agree, but I don't think we need to continue this.
All right, I mean, this is a simple quick plan B.
Um, this is something that came in this afternoon. Um, someone's trying to sell the house. Closing's supposed to be tomorrow. Uh, found some old undischarged, um, liens, um, the town had for, for past due taxes. Uh, Darlene pulled up the record and showed that those were paid in two thousand and nine. It was a seven, oh seven and oh eight tax liens. Um, so if there's no issue, I can pass it around. If you wanna take a look at it. Yeah, I mean, it's all been paid since then. It just, you know, the paper was never filed. So usually when a payment's made on a lien, it automatically will print. You say yes, please print the discharge or the lien, uh, discharge. So it just somehow either didn't get, got printed, didn't get filed or just never got printed. But it is paid at least. Everything since then's been paid.
I hope we sign that.
Does it matter which?
Seconded by Donald.
So I just write.
Any discussion?
Write my name and sign under it.
Jake, you have it?
Yes, I'm in favor. I'm trying to figure out how to sign the damn thing.
So are we, is that a vote?
Just like that, right? Usually they have our name written beside it and you just sign it and if this one doesn't, so I'll just make it write it.
Make a note of that.
No, it's not a big deal. I just wanted to make sure. Says zeros on the, on the ones I looked at. Can we go, can we go to report it down? Major will sign that. Is everyone good with that?
All right. I did share early last week, um, some of the things that were coming up or going on. I'll just say, I guess, since, since that email, um, we did send out, you probably know, tax bills went out last week. The mill rate was up to thirteen point six three, which was up from, I think, twelve eighty seven. Was it seven percent county, forty four percent town and forty nine percent the school. I did meet, while I was over there last week with the, meeting with the sheriff, did meet with Penobscot Island Air about the contract. Um, they also brought up, I think I shared with you this, this idea of a community access program. Um, it's something that they're talking with North Haven about. Uh, I guess there was some interest, um, from some people, at least on North Haven to think about. You know, is that sixty five dollar flight needed for the community? Is that something that the town would be willing to. Contract with Penobscot Island Air to think about locking in a certain number of flights a day or any days of the week. Um, to have access to a sixty five dollar flight. People wanted it. Um, so they did, did I send, I send that to you?
You said something about community access program, but I didn't really see what it.
I'll make sure.
It said sixty five dollars, but I don't know. I might not have read the whole thing.
It was like a two page or one front and back of a page, I believe, um, kind of proposal from PIA they shared with North Haven. So. If I didn't send out, send, or resend it, um, or send it again, or send it now. Need to think about for the next meeting. I think we've filed our response to the, we have filed our responses, Hurricane Island Foundation's appeal. Of the abatement requests, uh, they've responded to that. I don't know how long it would take for the, to hear back from the state board, um, review. But we've done what we had to do to file those things. Um, same thing with the Superior Court. All that stuff's been filed and I think responded to appropriately by both parties now. And so it's just a matter of waiting to hear. Who's next and what do we do? Um, Matt, the, Matt, the island fellow's been working with Gabe and I on strategic plan. Um, we're trying to get something in place that can. We thought about last year, proposed last year, linking the strategic plan that you guys came up with. Uh, to carry out some of the projects, to find a way to link that with budget goals and expectations, um, for this year. Um, so that's what, we're spending some time trying to link those two together. Um. He's also been working to pull together some committee resources to, just kinda, as we've been talking about that again for a couple of years now, is to. Make it clear the committee's purposes and the missions and rosters are up to date, but also to work with them to help carry out. You know, certain, certain things that make it more efficient or to get them over a, a hurdle that they've had. Um, but it helps, it'll help us identify. You know, all the committees that we have, um, where they're headed, make sure it's in alignment with. Your strategic plan, other plans the town has, um, to keep, keep those groups, um, active and productive and working. The audit for FY twenty. Yeah, FY twenty is going to be, um, being started within the next couple of weeks. Um, so that will be generally require some weekend work, um, with Debbie and myself, but. I think we're aiming for the end of October again to get all of that as we have the last couple of years out. I think they're coming to meet with their, talk with the school. I think they got some school meetings this coming week. So hopefully they'll get all of that, um, get, we'll get it done. I'm assured that we'll get it done a lot sooner than it was the last two years. So let's hope that's the case. Uh, Matt Wyman had reached out, um, the other day, say he had a conversation with a couple of clambers out here. Inquiring about a town shellfish management program. Um, you know, with that, of course, there's a warden and enforcement, but you come up with a plan for, you know, kind of regulating and encourage, you know. Maintaining healthy clam flats. You create a licenser system that, you know, can be given out and you can restrict how many folks that are non-residents. For example, a lot of towns restrict how many non-resident licenses are handed out. Um, this is something that's come up. So he's heard from, I think, at least two different people. Um, I haven't heard from them directly, but. It also kind of pairs with some of the issues we've been talking about around water quality. Um. And we know I've been mentioning that there are issues, there are closures, um, things are heading in the wrong direction. All of that could be rolled into a shellfish management program or plan. So I don't know. I think it's just out there right now. I don't know if there's, I think it's, if you guys hear from people or.
Can you get some more information from like Greenman or some other towns about how they run? I know. I've seen it on the news where people like tend out and run to get, because they only give out so many licenses per town. I mean. I'd just like some more information before we discuss it.
Sure.
I think the licenses are expensive and that's what covers it because they want, they want restricted assets. So. I mean, they'd only be seven licenses, you know, to go around the whole island. I mean, that's how some towns are and they. Costs a lot of money to get the licenses and, and that pays for the, I mean. I think if we're doing this, it's gonna pay for itself. It's not gonna be something else that we're doing.
Right, oh yeah. I think we're, you know, probably.
But we should have some more information about how these work in other towns before we.
Think, you know, one problem we're gonna run into is the fact that. Like, do we still have clam diggers, does anyone know, that are coming over and scabs from?
Yes.
It's, it's still going on.
There's like ten of them that come across, I mean. In these little pieces of junk from mainland, like.
It's, you know, it's, it might be hard to. Stop them.
That's what, that's where you're.
Yeah, 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 a warden. Yeah.
Or they'd have to buy a license if they, you know, wanted to come up here.
Was it, was it, was it effective?
Though there are a lot more clam diggers here on the island, there are a lot more clams too, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, um, I didn't even know that there was still that many clams around with the green crabs, so.
And places that, that, I mean, there must be, they keep coming, you know, as they come across the bay. I mean.
Well.
And some pretty nally looking boats and some pretty. I mean. I would think the coast guard should inspect some of those, but that's just me.
One thing I think would be interesting would be, um, be able to get, uh, the water. Testing done. Around to see, to try to figure out what's going on.
Right.
That would be a good thing.
Oh, yeah. I'm not, I'm not against them just saying.
No, no, I'm, I'm thinking that would be, to me, that would be as important as.
I think we could probably find some information for some other towns.
Yeah.
Then they could just dip a little thing in the water and collect some samples while they're looking too, but yes.
All right, yeah. Report back to us.
Okay. Uh, you know, the other thing that's come up in the last two weeks now. Took a break, took a pause, I guess, and it wasn't an issue. It wasn't a issue, wasn't an issue. Now it's an issue again, is there's a piece of property for sale. And I gotta try and, I'm looking into, I haven't found much, but, um, an old road that existed between Booth Quarry and York Road.
It's called.
Be down by a view or something.
It was called the Old Swamp Road. So there's something that, um, one of those requests sometimes that come in and. Takes a significant amount of time sometimes. Goes back to old records, you know, is there a record of its acceptance? Is there a record of its discontinuance?
Well, if we haven't worked on it already, then it's discontinued, right?
Uh, not automatically, but it makes it eligible to be.
We can do a town. We can to a town.
I'm assuming it hasn't been worked on for thirty years, and so there isn't even a road there anymore.
Other than that, those are most of what was coming up this, or since the last email, really.
Thank you, reported numbers.
I just, I have, sorry, I have one question about the election. Are, we're still doing in-person voting here, that's something?
Probably not.
I hope so.
Are you finding that you have enough volunteers?
I believe so, I haven't heard that they're, that Darlene's, sure, I don't know if she's reached out to everyone, but we had enough for the last one.
Keep me posted, cause I, I could volunteer, I know a lot of the volunteers older than I, it might not be as comfortable being in the public as much, so I, I could be, I'd be willing to.
Sure, yeah, if anyone's interested that's listening, um, feel free to reach out to the town office, and if you're interested in volunteering for any of that, just give them a call and leave your name and number.
And the absentee ballots is supposed to be here this weekend?
If that's the timeframe, yeah.
But it said on the news this morning, it was supposed to be around, coming to town by Sunday or Mondays, or seven.
Yeah, right, right on time, I think it's supposed to be thirty days in advance of that.
So that would be Monday, right?
It's here.
And all you have to do is request one from Darlene, right?
You can do it online, you can do it in person, you can do it by mail.
Can you do it by phone?
Oh, yeah.
I'm just.
Yeah.
This is a public meeting, I just wanna make sure everyone knows.
Yeah, a lot of some people call, some people call in to the office and can get it started there and make it available, and we can put it on the door, um, we're open at that time, you can come in. Um, again, I did it online last time.
There's no, there's no, you don't need a reason why you're absentee voting, you just say a long ballot, right?
Right, up until a certain point, you can just request one, and then I think it's, can't remember what the timeframe is, right before the election, it does have to be kind of like a certain special circumstance, um, but yeah, for right now, if you wanna request one, uh, absentee, you can certainly do that now.
Do you, are you, is there a recommendation from the town, if you prefer people to do that, to, to get the number down, or if we're gonna be in person, or do we?
Yeah, if, I mean, that would certainly, if, for anyone that wants to do it, to help keep the risk down, that would certainly be preferred or accepted, if, if folks wanna be in person, they can certainly still come in person, but for those that can and want to, we would encourage them to certainly request an absentee.
Gabe, maybe you could put, um, something in the win about the, uh, way, the right way to get absentee ballots and the timeframe and such.
Yeah, it's, uh, we've, we've had it posted in the win for several, for several weeks now, um, it's also available on the homepage of the town website, there's, it's either in the, in the, um, carousel, there's a, you'll see a nice friendly voting image, um, or under news and announcements. There's all the info you need with links to do the online application, as well as instructions for how to apply through, uh, Darlene, or Tanya, or Debbie at the town office.
Good, thank you.
No, I haven't either. Um, anything else, Senator Phil?
Uh, the, the, uh, if strip survey, where does that stand now?
Last I knew, he was tentative, he's coming in October.
Okay, that's it.
Anyone else have?
Sorry, how long is that session?
Um, so, uh, uh, some EOC meetings, and I think here you've talked about the fact that you're going to open up the town office sooner rather than later, now that the weather's, you know, one, do you have like any ideas about, or, or, or what we need, or what you'll need to do?
I have not sat down and put time to doing a plan or any of that yet, no.
Okay. Could you do that in the, between now and our next meeting?
Yeah.
You know?
Try to, yeah, do that, yeah.
Or are you gonna do, put some plexiglass up?
That's part of it, yeah, we'd have to, you know, do like every other business has done, and, and whenever you have a customer interaction, right, is put up some sort of barrier between them, so if we just do the one counter and one computer and just not have the other computer there on that counter open, just have one person at a time, and we gotta, we can't have more than two people in there anyways, um, you know, just be prepared to lean on the way out.
Wait it, this one inside.
What if they set a table and plexiglass out here, and no more than two people come in to the lobby, keep the office door closed, come out and get whatever they need, and go back in and close the door, that would eliminate a lot of screaming and.
Possibility, yeah.
And then people would stand inside and wait there.
I don't think you put more than one person in that lobby with, uh.
Well, I don't know how it would work, you know, they wouldn't have to go all the way into the office.
That'd be difficult, yeah. Yeah, so yeah, I have to, once I look that up, yeah.
Just some suggestions.
I move we go into executive session, uh, pursuant to one MRSA, section four oh five, section six, section F. Discussing ambulance hardship waiver application, seconded by Donald Cool, all in favor? Thank you, everyone, for tuning in, have a good evening.